The Tuesday morning, October 3rd, study session to order. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Leitner?
Here.
Commissioner Walz? Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Duckham? Commissioner Tompkins? Commissioner Mahoney?
Present.
Commissioner Plachek?
Here.
Commissioner Elwell?
Here.
Chairman Shatwell?
Here.
First opportunity for public comment is at this time. Each individual will state their name. You have three minutes to speak and to address the board. You may only address the board once under public comment. The opportunity may not be yielded and your time may not be yielded to others. The board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time. Public comment is open. Any public comment?
Yes, my name is Luanne Allen and I'm a Jackson County retiree. And once again, I've been brought in here to have to fight for my health care benefits so that they don't change from what I was promised when I retired. Here four years ago and had to defend the same thing. At that time, there was also a grievance filed because there was one employee who was still employed and that grievance was won. And now you're still trying to do something with the pre-65 retirees. I have a packet that's been made up, including the grievance, if anyone would like to see it. No? Okay. That tells me how much you care for the dedication and the abuse of the public that we put up with. I worked here for more than 30 years and this is what I get, along with my fellow retirees. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. J.C. Dot, Summit Township Change Order.
Good morning Commissioners. We have two change orders proposed in front of you today. The first is for Summit. Contractors advised us that they do have capacity to do this additional work. And as you can see from the map attached, it's adjacent to an existing project that was already awarded. So I'm happy to take any questions. It's pretty straightforward, actually. It's the existing contract prices just extended to do additional work due to good weather and good progress on existing work.
Commissioner Elwell?
Chris, what was the total of the bonding for Summit Township? And what portion of this is it? I mean, this seems like a lot. Was it 15 or 18 million?
You mean for our bonds or for Summit's bonds?
For Summit's, yeah.
Their bonds were for 22 million.
22, okay.
So, yeah, we're trying to get going out of the gate as strong as we can, but being prudent in doing the projects that we have ready solutions for. Plus, you have economy of scale. We're already mobilized.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, do you need to vote, sir? Or is this just go to committee? Entertain a motion, please, for the change order for Summit Township. We have a motion and support. Any questions? Post the roll, please. Okay. Chris, change order, Spring Arbor.
Thank you. Similarly, as you can see from the location map, this adds Bowerman Road to the project, which made sense after we analyzed things. So we're seeking a similar approval to keep construction rolling that would add 209,000 to that contract.
Questions, Commissioners? We have a motion and support. Any questions to the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you post it?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you for your help in keeping these projects going. Thanks.
Thank you. Administrator Overton, item five.
Thank you. I'd ask Mr. Martincheck to step to introduce our guest. Give us a brief overview, please. Thank you.
Hi, good morning Commissioners. What you have in front of you is a study done by our Marsh McLennan Associates and a staff report concerning pre-65 retiree coverage. The recommendation is a part of that, and I'd like to introduce our consultant from Marsh McLennan, Greg Sermott, to take you through the presentation.
Good morning. I have a brief slide deck to present this morning relative to the Blue Cross Blue Shield Self-Inured Plan renewal. This is the current program in place for the pre-65 retirees of Jackson County on J.C. Dot, as well as information on the alternatives that are being considered for the first of the year with the recommendation to proceed with a new program that will satisfy the budgetary targets that were established for us in initiating this project. As things stand right now, we're looking at a 20.1% forecasted increase in the rating of the pre-65 program looking into 2018 calendar year. It's just over half a million dollars a year. That's on the pre-65. On the post-65, which is an entirely different program, that renewed at 2.6%, so a much more favorable rate of increase on that program, about $55,000 per year. For reasons relating to the ACA Cadillac Tax, this issue is very important to the county. So not only for budgetary reasons next year, but looking out several years into 2020 and beyond, the Affordable Care Act establishes thresholds over which costs attributable to the pre-65 retiree program are subject to what's called the Cadillac Tax. It's a 40% excise tax that is applied to costs above and beyond those thresholds. Those thresholds for '18 are set at $11,850 for a single individual, $30,950 annually for a family. Those numbers will be indexed forward to 2020 and beyond. At this point, given the forecasted cost for '18 for the pre-65 self-funded program, the county is beginning to encroach, you know, very closely to those thresholds. Very likely, you'll trigger out into 2020 and beyond. In fact, the determination of the excise tax is made on a person-by-person basis, not on the plan in aggregate. And as we look at the separate programs that are in place right now, there are certain segments of the plan that do already trigger the Cadillac Tax. So this is of concern, certainly, and a very important consideration in our planning looking forward. So the county does have options, of course. The first of which is simply to renew with Blue Cross and make modifications to the plan as appropriate that allow the county to satisfy its cost targets for '18 and beyond. The issue with being self-insured, of course, is that the county maintains risk, which is to say that if the experience of the plan is worse than the forecasted increase that we have for '18 or beyond, then the county, of course, is liable for those expenses. So we're careful in our budgeting, but there's always the risk that costs could be higher. Now, to mitigate the stress on the plan for next year and beyond, there are some plan design modifications that can be made. In order to hit the savings target, which we have satisfied through the recommendation, which I'll show you in a moment, of 620,000 annually, we are able to attain that level of savings by maintaining the Blue Cross program, but it would require a fairly significant degrading of the value of the plan for the pre-65 retirees. We'd be looking at a deductible level of $1,500 per year, per person, to an out-of-pocket limit of $3,000 per year. I'll show you in a little deeper detail what that plan looks like in just a moment. Another option is to contract with HAP. HAP has submitted a fully insured proposal for the county's consideration. This is a multi-year arrangement, so there are rate caps which stipulate the maximum level of increase year-to-year over the next three years. That's a worst-case scenario. Rates could come in lower than the rate caps if the experience of the plan warrants that. This is fully insured, so 100% of the risk is shifted to HAP. So the county is, in this instance, out of the insurance game. There's no further liability above and beyond the premium cost that the county will incur. There are two distinct alternatives which are being put forth for consideration. One is a plan design that is a combination of an HMO, this is a new HMO through HAP, and a PPO. This is a program that is being rolled out, as you know, to the nonrepresented employees of the county in J.C. Dot for 118. I'll review that with you in just a moment. The other alternative is to consolidate the various programs, legacy programs that exist today for the pre-65 retired into a single national PPO program through HAP. And we'll get into those details as well. So all things considered, the proposal put forth by HAP is very competitive. It does satisfy the cost reduction targets for the county. It allows the county to provide, to continue to provide a relatively comparatively high level of security to the pre-65 retirees and avoid rather drastic measures draconian in some cases of, you know, significantly degrading plan value through higher deductibles and copays and such. Or even taking the route that other public employers have taken, steps such as increasing premium contributions significantly, limiting eligibility for dependents, or even elimination outright of the program, moving to defined contribution of private exchange arrangements where individuals are moved to the individual marketplace. At the top of this slide, you'll see the combination of plans that's being rolled out to the active, nonrepresented employees of the county. It's the combination of an HMO, which has two distinct levels of benefit. One benefit, the highest benefit, is a 250 deductible per person per year with a $4,000 out-of-pocket limit per year. There are copays associated with a variety of professional services, as you can see here. Pharmacy copay set at $10, generic $40, preferred brand, and $50, excuse me, 50% for non-preferred medications. This high benefit level is available through Allegiance Henry Ford and the Henry Ford Medical Group, whereas Level 2 benefits, or Tier 2 in this case, has $1,000 deductible per year with 40% member cost share, up to a maximum out-of-pocket of $4,000 per year. These benefits are available if an employee of the county were to seek services within the broader HAP commercial HMO network. There is no coverage in the HMO for out-of-network. The second option that's being offered to nonrepresented active employees is what we call a consumer-directed health plan, CDHP. This is a higher deductible arrangement that exists today for the nonrepresented employees. It has a $1,500 deductible per person, 20% member cost share beyond the deductible. What's unique about this program is that it allows the employee to set aside money pre-tax into a health savings account. Okay? This is a national PPO, so it's not a restricted network, really, in any sense of the word. There's freedom of access and navigate for primary care, specialty care, whatnot, at the employee's discretion. So it's the combination of these two plans that's being rolled out to the active, nonrepresented employees. And that is an option for the pre-65 as well, retirees. The other alternative with HAP is what you see down in the bottom left, Alternative B. And this is a single, uniform, national PPO program that has $100 deductible per calendar year, per person. It has copays, flat-dollar copays associated with professional office services, which you can see here, $20 for a PCP, primary care office visit. That'd be a diagnostic office visit. This plan is ACA compliant, which is to say that it includes all of the federally mandated preventive care services with no cost share to the member on an unlimited basis. You can see the copays associated with urgent care at $75 and $100 per visit for ER. Facility care is covered with a member cost share of 10% until the out-of-pocket expense of the member, including the deductible and all copays, reaches $2,000 per year. In addition to this plan design, which, again, would be made available uniformly to all pre-65 retirees, there is a cash-in-lieu benefit, and this is offered today by the county. So for the pre-65, whether single or family, there's $100 and $200 per month, respectively, cash payment for anyone who wishes to opt out of the county program and participate in some other employer or other plan. So all things considered, the recommendation is to move forward with HAP, to migrate the county's self-insured plan to a fully insured program, take advantage of a three-year rate-cap arrangement with HAP, convey all of that risk to them, and access care for the pre-65 retirees through the national PPO arrangement that would be put in place to replace Blue Cross Blue Shield. That PPO is a combination of HAP's PPO, which is called Alliance Health &amp; Life here in Michigan, wrapped by Cigna Healthcare, the large national insurer who is a partner of HAP. And this would provide broad access across the country for those retirees who reside or travel outside of this service area. As you'll see in a minute, when we look at the legacy plans available today to the pre-65, and there's a number of them, as we look to consolidate those, there's still a maintenance of a relatively high benefit level. Granted, there is some cost share, some incremental cost share that occurs, but by and large, that's relatively minor in the context of total health spend. And of course, as I mentioned before, we'd maintain the cash-in-lieu benefit. Wanted to put up a slide here that reflects the savings to the county that is attributable to this arrangement. So in the first line, you can see the 2017 forecasted Blue Cross spend. It's 2.4 million. It's forecasted to increase to 2.9 million for the pre-65 retirees into '18. If we forecast that forward at 8% a year, which is, you know, somewhat conservative, moderate assumption for prevailing trend, rate of increase in health care costs, would be up to 3.4 million by 2020. By contrast, the HAP proposal, fully insured, brings premium for 2018 in at just shy of 2.3 million. Forecasted out at the rate cap for year two, 11%, takes us to 2.5, up to 2.748 million in 2020. And that's at an 8% rate cap. So you can see, even in the third year, at 2.748 million, that is still below the forecasted cost for 2018 if the county were to do nothing at all and simply renew with Blue Cross Blue Shield. So cumulatively, the value, the financial impact of this arrangement is worth almost 1.9 million to the county over those three years. So it's very significant. I mentioned before the two options that are available to active, nonrepresented employees or will be available first of the year. And this illustration is depicting the construct of that network arrangement. So to the left, you see that we have, in the smallest circle, this is the HMO, Tier 1 benefits, which encompasses Henry Ford Allegiance Health, Jackson Health Network, and the Henry Ford Medical Group. Tier 2 wraps around that, still considered in-network, but it's the commercial HAP HMO network. There is no out-of-network coverage under the HMO. We are not recommending this approach for the pre-65 retirees. What we are recommending is just a simple national PPO arrangement through Alliance Health &amp; Life and Cigna. And that's reflected in the illustration to the right, which shows the in-network benefits being available through Alliance and Cigna. There is an out-of-network benefit, unlike the HMO, but as it is today, those out-of-network benefits are degraded substantially, which shouldn't be an issue for most retirees. This is a very large national network arrangement that's being proposed. So when we consider the HAP proposal, it does create uniformity of design. We have a number of programs in place today, old legacy plans, traditional plans, point-of-service plans, PPO plans for the pre-65 retirees. This proposal and recommendation allows the county to consolidate those into a single, unified program, which certainly is more efficient in terms of pricing and administration and communication, and definitely offers significant premium savings, as has been proposed by HAP. As I mentioned before, it allows the county to maintain a comparatively high benefit level, high level of security for the pre-65s, albeit for a number of individuals with some incremental cost share. Now, some of that is offset by the fact that, as I mentioned before, this is an insured ACA compliant plan. Today, the county does not maintain an ACA compliant plan. There are elements and mandates of coverage that the county has not rolled out to the pre-65 retirees, excuse me, because it didn't have to. Well, moving to insurance, the county would be compelled and obligated to do so. And so the plan design that's being put forth does include all of those ACA coverage mandates, the biggest one of which is the preventive services available at no cost to the retiree. Another point to consider is, while there is some cost shift here, it is short-lived. It's of a limited duration because as the pre-65 hit Medicare eligibility, they at that point would be rolled into the county's post-65 retiree program, which itself has been maintained at a relatively high benefit level over the history. I mentioned before the three-year rate caps, which gives budgetability, fixes the cost of the county in a worst-case scenario over those three years. Our hope is that the cost will actually be lower than the rate caps. And importantly, if at any point during that three-year period, the county decides that it needs to, or that it's prudent to revert back to a course of self-insuring the program as opposed to fully insuring the program, the county has that discretion. I want to take just a couple moments here and flick through a few slides, which shows on a side-by-side comparative basis the current programs that are available to the pre-65 in comparison to the recommended HAP PPO program. So we divided these into a number of different, what we call divisions in the world of Blue Cross. And to the left there, you see the majority, large majority of pre-65, 124 individuals enrolled in a community blue PPO plan, which itself has $100 deductible, so there'd be no change on a go-forward basis, 90% plan payment, no change going forward. But there is, you see, on the out-of-pocket limit, a higher amount. So the member today is being exposed to $1,100 per person, maximum out-of-pocket. That would increase to $2,000 per year. As you go down the list there, you can see there's some copay adjustments from $20 for urgent care to $75 per visit. The pharmacy program would not change in terms of its copay levels. And then we have another 11 individuals in the center column who are enrolled in HBI. This is healthy blue incentive. This is the wellness PPO that's available to active employees today. This program is very rich. It has no deductible at all, no co-insurance for facility care. Of course, that would change. The unified or the consolidated HAP PPO program that's being recommended has $100 deductible with that 10% member cost share. So these 11 individuals certainly would be impacted. As we look at some of the other programs that are in place today, there's relatively low participation. These are older plans, very few people in them. Nonetheless, they are impacted, or this program has the propensity to impact them. We have one individual in an old point-of-service plan called Blue Choice. Another five individuals in the center column enrolled in a Blue Choice program. These differ simply by their office visit copays and pharmacy copays. And then in the column 69, the Division 69, this again is an old Blue Choice point-of-service program. We've got 18 individuals here. And so the major change to them, of course, is the deductible and the co-insurance. The pharmacy plan does not change for them. Here are several other current options available. We've got two people in an old traditional plan with a $3 drug card. Another one individual enrolled in Plan 235, this is an old traditional plan as well. Those have $100 deductibles in place today. Plan 236 is a PPO with a $5 drug card. So that would, that in tandem with the deductible change would be the most substantive impact of those two individuals. And this is the final slide, which reflects for another nine folks enrolled today in legacy plans, the impact of those. So, again, all in all, to drive to this unified arrangement, to attain the 1.8 million in savings, it's really, it's not a necessity that there is some element of cost share. It's mitigated to some degree by the expansion of benefits under ACA. Have you take any questions?
Commissioners, any questions? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Administrator?
Do that to Chairman. So the plan is to run this through Personnel and Finance next Monday?
Yeah. I want to go back to Luanne a moment. Luanne, you had a packet you wanted to give the Commissioners. We didn't have a correspondence spot on here. I apologize. If you'd like to return it to the clerk right now, I would appreciate it. Entertain a motion to receive? We have a motion and support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I apologize, Luanne.
That's okay. Thank you very much for looking at it.
Administrator Overton?
Next up, we have a opportunity for a little pop-up retail spot downstairs, and Rick can explain it for us.
Good morning, everyone. In front of you, you have a staff report for a proposed pop-up retail lease down in room 101. It's a small toy store, and the individual approached us and asked about leasing that space. It falls in line with our economic development plan, where we're trying to provide these incubator spaces for these small retail stores with the hope that they will grow and move on into bigger and better spaces.
Commissioner Elwell?
Just two questions, Rick. One, that's a room that's infrequently used. Is that accurate?
It is.
Okay. And the other retail space we've got with the orange peacock, has that gone to month-to-month now?
That is month-to-month. We've talked to them about extending the lease or, you know, moving it forward. We're still in that process.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I would ask the board to consider action today. They would like to be in there before Christmas, so. And that means that we could start the lease, you know, November 1st, and it gives them a little bit of time.
a little bit of time to get organized.
Have a motion in support? All in favor, please say aye. Oh, we got it.
Okay.
Sarah wants to take this. No, actually, the Assistant County Administrator's been taking lead on this, and she's going to give us the overview and take us through it.
Thank you. As a result of some standards that were implemented through the state of Michigan, some legislation and Michigan Indigent Defense Commission that was created, there's some standards that we need to comply with in regards to our court-appointed attorneys. And I've attached a staff report, as well as a document, that explains those standards. There's four standards at this point. It's anticipated that there will be more in the future. There's four at this time that they're looking at for additional proposals, so we would be looking, after we submit our initial proposal, we would be looking for additional changes in the future, once this is implemented. The legislation that has been implemented indicates that any changes that we make as a result of this to comply with the standards would be, the cost would be covered by grants from the state of Michigan. So, until such time as those grants have been issued, we are not required to do anything other than submit a proposal. The proposal is due November 20th. Excuse me, I've been working on that, meeting with stakeholders. I've met with the prosecutor, the undersheriff, Circuit Court, District Court, their administration, and getting everybody's views as to what would be the best way to implement these standards for Jackson County. Again, our proposal is due November 20th. Other than submitting a proposal at this time, we're not required to do anything until such time as we hear from the state of Michigan that they have money, and then we would be required to implement the standards at that time. So, I will be coming back in November. At this time, it's informational. Again, I've attached, I believe it's a lengthy explanation in board docs of what the standards are. So, I'll be back in November at the study session requesting approval of the proposal that I will submit in order to be compliant and submitted on time by November 20th.
We wait for your analysis. Any other items? Hearing none. We've arrived at the second opportunity for public comment this morning. Any public comment?
My name's Paula Raymond, and I'm also a retiree of the county with 25 years of service. I'm the one that filed the grievance back in 2013, and I just thank you for taking the packet and hope that you read it. And the list of people that that entailed, I don't have the count, but some of those have reached age 65, so they're no longer on the list. Thank you.
Morning. My name is Anthony Shepherd. I retired from the Sheriff's Department. I was a sergeant in the road patrol, recently retired. First of all, I want to thank you for allowing me to work here all these years. I just want to make a couple comments. My understanding, you're not going to answer any questions. I don't know if there's any way that we could have met with a HAP representative. We didn't have a lot of the information that was on the board in regards to it. We only got the initial paperwork that was sent out. I have a few questions about dental and health, which we don't have as retirees once we leave the agency. We also pay a 20% copay. I didn't notice any changes in that copay once we retired and no longer got dental and health. My understanding also is there's a couple units in the negotiating stages through the Sheriff's Department that have 312 arbitration rights, and more likely, it's going to have to be decided by an arbitrator whether or not this insurance is comparable to what we presently have. So, I would urge you to wait until those decisions are made. Kind of nervous, I don't usually get in front of people and talk. I am a retiree, like I said. In 10 days, I'll be heading south, won't be back till April. My significant other works in the medical field, and being advised by her that the Health Allegiance, or the Health Alliance program, doesn't really cover you as good as the present Blue Cross that we have, especially if you're down south. I ended up in the hospital a year ago down in Mississippi. The Blue Cross took care of most of that cost there on that. It worked out great. Wasn't any lumps in the road or anything like that, and able to get that stuff done. My understanding is, if you have a common cold, you're down south, you want to go to a doctor to take care of it, can't do that, because there's not a lot of them. I've actually looked it up myself. There's not a lot of HAP doctors in the south area, and you'd have to go to an emergency walk-in clinic, which is not an issue, but it's kind of, I think, abusing that clinic.
You're over your time, sir.
Oh, am I?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time.
Hi, Susie Howe. I'm a retiree, and I am on Medicare due to a severe medical problem. But I was wondering, a lot of people here have information about the proposed changes. My husband and I received nothing. We heard about this by way of communication with other employees, so I was wondering if there was any way we could get a copy of what was presented here or something in writing, because we've received nothing.
I'm going to take an exception here. Get with HR.
HR?
Yep. And they'll share with you everything.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you very much for your time.
Any more public comment? Commissioner comments? Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to thank the board for taking the time to allow the retirees to come here and both vent and ask questions, and hopefully, HR can get the information to them they need to be able to compare what they've got now to what the potential proposal is. But I think it's a good exercise in education here to sit and listen to them, so, and I appreciate the board doing that.
Commissioner comments? Entertained a motion to go into closed session in accordance with MCL 15.268, discuss a legal opinion. In support? Madam Clerk, could you post the vote?
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Do you want to post the vote? Okay, she's going to post the vote. Everyone, is there a no? Everyone said yes. Entertained a motion to adjourn? Have a motion in support? Any questions to the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Do a...